So this is being recorded on Teams. It is not being streamed to YouTube. We're having an issue with that, but that will be uploaded tomorrow to YouTube.
This time I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for April 23rd to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Tom?
Yes, here.
James?
Present.
Donnie?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
If I could get an approval of the agenda, I'm going to amend it and just add one item. There will be an item added at the very end for our review. It is the development. Sorry, let me grab it here real quick. It is our development agreement for land use, so I'm going to have that added at the very end during our Planning Commission meeting. And with that addition, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda with the amended development item.
Second.
Motion second. Can I have roll call, please?
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Approval of the March 26th minutes.
Make a motion to approve the March 26th minutes.
Have a second. Motion in a second. A roll call, please.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
At this time, I will entertain any comments from citizens. That's anything that's not on our agenda tonight. So if you've got anything you wanted to talk to about tonight, other than agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and try to limit it to three minutes.
Misty Piazza, 782 Piazza Road. I'm just calling, coming up here to let everybody, to invite everyone to the Cries of the Cottonfield documentary that's going to be May 8th at 6:00 PM at the Harbor High Auditorium. It's all about the history of the town here, and it's been very well done. And I just encourage everyone to come out and see the world premiere. May 8th, 6:00 PM, Harbor High Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Anybody else? Anybody online?
No.
We don't have anybody. Sorry. Okay. No old business, new business. We're going to move into the public hearing, and we will listen to the item number one, which is a rezone request. Applicant is requesting to rezone 10.46 acres from R3 to Agricultural located at 1278 Piazza Road. Parcel number is provided. This is a public hearing, so this is a time for the public to come up and comment if you'd like. I'm going to ask you to come up to the podium, state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Letitia Stain. I live at 1458 Piazza Road, and I'm not for the RV park that they're wanting to put on Piazza Road. It's a, I don't know if you've ever been on it. It's a very small road, dead ends. There's only enough room for two cars. I wrote things down. We have a lot of walkers, joggers, people riding bicycles up and down that road. A lot of them from Westbrook. There would be absolutely nowhere for them to turn around safely if they happen to miss their driveway. It's just a small road. And I guess I'll worry a little bit. I don't even know if they had anything to do with it, but if this doesn't turn out like he wants, since if you rezone it and give him a permit, could he build something else without coming up here or change it, make it long-term, whatever? Anyway, I'm just hoping you don't rezone it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy McFalls, and I live at 1513 Piazza Road. I'm at the very end of the road, the road dead ends. And I am against the rezoning if they're going to put in a park there, a mobile home park or RV park or whatever. As the lady before stated, it's a narrow road. I have had personally, an 18-wheeler came down the road, and it was a lady driver, and she was piggybacking three other tractors, brand new. And she got down, she got lost, couldn't turn around. And so she attempted to turn around, and she kept banging into the tree in our yard and almost destroyed the tree. And her husband had to come and help her get it repositioned, and they also had to drive through our yard, which left huge ruts in the yard, which were never repaired. And also, a person living behind us, who was Jeff and Kelsey Smith, they had to move their mobile home out, and there was no room for them to make the curve. And so they had to drive through my yard, which left more ruts. And as the lady said, this is not a wide road. It's a dead-end road. People are constantly coming down at the end of the road where I live. I guess they think it's a through road, and they are trying to turn around. Also, the owner of the property next to me has a farm with cattle there, and people have actually cut the locks on his gate and gone in and onto his property to turn around. And so this is just not acceptable. I'm afraid of what it might do to property values. This is a residential area and with small children down there, and there's just not room on this road for that kind of traffic to go through there. And I'm afraid that someone's going to come down there with an RV or mobile home or whatever and miss the turn and not be able to get into where they're supposed to, and are going to have to cut across my property, which I'm totally against. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. My name's Rick Piazza. You guys all got this email from me, but I want to read it to whoever may have not heard what I had to say about this. To whom this may concern, I hope this message finds you well. My name is Rick Piazza. My wife, Ramona Piazza. We reside at 720 Piazza Road. We want to let all concerned know that we are vehemently opposed to a proposed RV park or any commercial development on Piazza Road. We are deeply concerned about the implications of allowing this in a fully residential area of estate lots. Piazza Road is a no-outlet street which connects to Fletcher Avenue, where heavy traffic traverses through most of the day from the school and industrial park further east. Piazza Road is a heavily pedestrian-utilized street. The joggers, families walking or riding bikes from Piazza Road residence and the Westbrook subdivision now include this street in their day-to-day lives. We ask that you give serious consideration that this is not a place for an RV park and strongly urge you to reject this development. We would like to thank you all for your leadership and trust that you will join us in opposing this rezoning. Thank you. Sir?
My name's Lance Stewart. I live at 1367 Piazza Road. And, you know, following up on them, you know, you've been made aware that it's a dead-end street, not a good place to turn around. You know, everybody there is a personal residence. You know, there's farms. You know, I don't know about everybody else, but this is the biggest investment me and my family have made. Move out there because it's kind of like being in the middle of the country, in the middle of the city. Everything's close, but you're still living in the country. The road isn't made to carry the type of traffic that I think that we're talking about. You know, I think as you start turning sharp and things like that, it'll start to roll the asphalt up. I work at a trucking company, and I know that when you start turning without moving fast, that you tear concrete up pretty easy, or asphalt at least. Don't think it'll be good for the road. I think, just like everybody else said, you know, you pass people with strollers and dogs and kids and not really a place that's made, there's not sidewalks on it. You know, there's not places to get out of the way. I don't know if somebody that's unfamiliar with the area is prepared to deal with all of that. Turning around, of course, is an issue. And then the property values, swinging back to those, you know, mobile home park, RV park, I don't know that it's a whole lot different in a lot of people's minds. You know, it's a major investment for everybody that lives there, and it would be detrimental to everybody in the neighborhood except for one person. I just don't see that it would improve anybody's property value or the value of property in Tonny Town to have this kind of thing move in. Maybe it's RVs to begin with. Later, it's mobile homes. I don't know where it all goes, but just nothing really good in my mind with having this kind of thing move into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Norton. My wife and I live at 1007 Piazza Road. We're opposed to the RV park. Just a couple of quick points. There'd be additional traffic. We won't know the people driving the RVs. Our road gets a lot of walkers, joggers, bicycles, pets from the neighborhood, and it doesn't benefit the neighbors. Thanks.
David Hatfield, 1359 Piazza Road. My consideration of this deal, because I like Grant, and I'm not against anybody trying to do something to, you know, have a business or do that, so I'm not. But my concern is, that road's not built. It's like two inches of asphalt. You're putting on an A-class coach on a road that's going to have pivoting in and out. We've got one stop sign, or one speed limit sign on that road, and it's halfway down facing the opposite. So when you turn on that road, nobody knows what the speed limit is. It's just there. There's no deer crossing signs up, and we got one for the kids, and that's what we've got. A lot of kids coming up and down. But the concern is that we've got one spot on that road that's got, it's been patched I don't know how many times. So we asked, I was trying to get ahold of the road department, find out what if you've got a sign on Fletcher that says, "No trucks." Can't come down there by the school. Can't come down Fletcher. The other deal says, "Truck has to go out that way." So why, in my opinion, is an A-class coach allows, I'm sorry, to come in and utilize that road? Because an A-class coach is as big as a dump truck, or bigger, in my opinion. So I don't see, if the Planning Commission's going to take care of the road, or the road department, who's going to take care of that road if somebody's coming on there with A-class coaches and tearing that up? Plus, we don't have the signs. How are they going to know what the speed limit is even coming down that thing? So that's a few, just, and I'm with everybody else. I would like to see that the concerns that we have that we haven't even spoke of, when people come with a coach or a camper, they don't come to park out in the backwoods. So that means we're going to have their friends and their family coming. So that's not just the increase of the park, but we've got their people coming. And plus, they're not going to sit there, and they're going to go out and eat and travel. Put my head back here. But that's our concern, is that when we say there's an increase in travel, it's not just the coaches and the, you know, it's all the people that's going to, they're going to be, they're not going to come and park and sit in that wooded area. They're going to get out and travel, and they're going to have friends coming and travel. So we're a little bit concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just so you know, during public comments, it's a public hearing. We don't communicate back, so I don't want you to think we're just sitting up here and not. That's, so we're just here to take in the information from the citizens. So I don't want you to think we're ignoring you, we're listening.
My name's Danny Neal. I live at 1203 Piazza Road, and I feel lucky to have them as neighbors. I think they have high morals, and I think they're great neighbors, and I've known Grant for a long time. And I hate coming up here, opposing what he wants, you know, what he wants to do, you know. I'm just afraid that if this is allowed, that it might open the door 20 acres, I mean, the next 20 acres beside him. If this is allowed, can you put 60 more RVs beside it if this is approved? And my grandkids live there, too, and it kind of scares me a little bit, you know, big RVs coming down the road. But this is, like I said, Grant's a great guy, and I don't know his wife very well, but I appreciate them. I'm glad to have them as neighbors, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I guess I'm going to be the only person who says something different. I kind of look-
Just, could I get your name and address, please?
Kelly Johns, and I'm at 799 Ball Singer. And actually, my road is the same width as their road. It's 18 feet, I think. But I'm kind of looking at this picture right here, and I'm seeing, are we really thinking about the further development of what we want Tonny Town to be? Do we want Tonny Town to expand and be more, you know, for tourism? Do we want these families to come in and eat at all of these restaurants? Come to the Grape Festival and be a part of that? When these families come, they're going to come for the holidays so that they can spend time with their families. A lot of them may have stayed at hotels. I have lived, I've come from Texas. I lived in a small community that was very tourism, and we had a lot of RVs around the area, and they were great because it brought in the tourism. What do we want Tonny Town to look like? What do you want the future of Tonny Town to look like? When you drive down Sunset, it's all industrial. When I first came out here, that's all I thought. We were the industrial side. And the other thing is, do you want Tonny Town to be known as Tonny Town? Or do you want Tonny Town to be known as part of Springdale? And part of that is the tourism. RV parks are strong communities. They work well within each other. They spread news. If they like Kim and Grant's RV park, they're going to tell others. It's going to expand. They're going to use the gas stations. They're going to eat at the restaurants. All of it can have future positive growth. On my street, we have RVs come up and down. It's the same length. We have trucks come up and down. It is the same width. You know, we have people walking on the side of the road. We all have those concerns on our streets. But as we move forward, as we try to make this more of a community, all of those things that can be worked out. So I think in the end, what they create can end up being better for not just them, but every restaurant around us, every gas station around us, everything to make what we want Tonny Town to look like.
Clint Neal, 1219 Piazza. Yeah, like my dad said, we really like having Grant as neighbors. In fact, my house looks over at his property, and he takes great care of his property, so I also enjoy having him as a neighbor. But having said that, given a lot of the points that others have made, like my kid's safety, traffic, and things of that nature, I want to oppose the proposal. I'd also like to point out, you know, none of us are opposed to an RV park in general. We're opposed to an RV park on our road for the reasons we pointed out. And in fact, you know, when you talk about what is, what do we as citizens want Tonny Town to be, the Tonny Town website says, and I quote, "Get out of the traffic and into the country." So that's why we moved to Tonny Town. And in fact, the previous mayor was a neighbor of mine, and he told me his idea was to have Tonny Town be the next Springdale. And my immediate response was, well, have you asked your constituents? Because my guess that nobody wants that. That's why they moved here. So again, we're not against the idea completely. It's just not on that street where it's so residential and where we use it as pedestrian traffic for the safety of our kids and everybody else that comes down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, y'all. Amy Couch, 1230, 1238, and 1246 Piazza Road. Sorry, my husband just told me there's only certain things I can say tonight, so I've been deleting while I've been there. While we were in Maui last year, we had a cough from the fire department. My dad's house, who lives behind us, we're 1230, he's 1238, the house was on fire. Fire truck had no problem getting up the driveway. You should see my driveway. We have no hydrant in our yard. Still, they were able to get the fire out. We have an abundance of trees, not a clear, awesome, flat lot. The RV park is going to be directly across from my dad's house, so the same distance from Piazza to my dad's house where they put out a fire will be where the RV park is. There is, this is proposed for eight RVs. They won't be parked along their driveway where people can see them. Probably, we will be the one that sees the RVs. I think possibly there won't actually be another neighbor that sees the RVs once they're parked. And I haven't asked my husband yet, but they are welcome to let the RV drive across my yard and out my driveway if they need it. It's fine. Tim and Grant are the best neighbors anybody could ever have. Y'all are really missing out. Sorry. Anyone concerned about the traffic of the eight RVs could possibly research the new Don Tyson exchange that's going to come in. Right now, on 412, all the Oklahoma traffic, 112 Fayetteville, I mean, blasting us on a very narrow 112 road that is busted up and really needs help. Narrow road. And when you come off of 412, turn left onto 112, there's no speed limit sign. You can go all the way down, where you turn right onto Fletcher, there's no speed limit I appreciate that it's a nice neighborhood. I moved here in 1995. It used to be a country setting. Now I sit on my front porch, and my setting is houses and people everywhere. There's people walking up and down my road. It's not country anymore. It was country. It's gone. Now, when Don Tyson comes in and it connects to Piazza, there's going to be dump trucks, there's going to be semis, there's going to be, Don Tyson is bringing what everybody is afraid of, not a RV park.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lane Smith. I live at 1309 Piazza Road. I'm here to oppose, for many of the same reasons that everyone said. Main concern is property values. I don't feel like that would help them or maintain where they're currently at. And then the increased traffic on the road. I have two young kids and just worried about having that extra additional traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to actually close item number one. Item number two was actually a conditional use for the RV park, so if it's okay, I think we've heard from everybody on that piece. The first one was actually moving to Agricultural. If it's okay, Brad, is that okay to do that? I think we've heard everybody on those two items. Commission? Okay. Do you want to have a chance to? We will, once we get to it, yes, sir. Once we get into, during the actual meeting, this is just really the public hearing of it. No, you're fine. You're totally fine. And citizens will get chants during that time as well, so. Our next item, number three, is a variance request. Applicant is requesting a variance to develop code 153080 regarding encroachment into setbacks. The property is located at 2536 Brush Creek Road, on a total of 5.775 acres. At this time, I will open it up to the public to comment on item number three. Seeing none, nobody online, I am actually going to close the public hearing. I'm going to open up the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and we will review this variance request. Applicant's requesting a variance to develop the code 153080, 153087 regarding encroachment into setbacks. The property is located at 2536 Brush Creek Road on a total of 5.775 acres. Brad, is this you?
Yes. Want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. What you have before you for the Board of Zoning is a variance request on a lot split in which we have reviewed, and within that lot split, there are several buildings that you will see in front of you that when we do the split, the setbacks will interfere with those. We feel that with the variance, this will be comparable to what they're asking for, and we ask you guys to take a look at this at this time. We are asking for approval of the variance of this.
Very good. I will entertain a motion first before we discuss, Commission.
Motion to approve the variance request for proper, property split. I was looking for an address, but I can't find an address now.
Second, motion in a second. I will open it up for discussion. What are your questions or concerns about this? If you have any. Yes, Candy?
If we give this, allow this variance, does that apply to any future buildings they want to put up? Will they get a variance?
Anything they do in the future will have to meet the current setback standards.
Okay.
Thanks, Candy. Thanks, Brad. Yes, sir. Tom?
There's a, it looks like there's a building. I'm looking at the 2.8, four-acre tract on the left as I'm reading it at the very front. I'm looking at, am I looking at the footprint of a building, and it's encroaching into what would be normally a setback? Is that correct? And that would put, do you have an estimate of about how many feet from that fence line, that new boundary adjusted line? And is there a reason why you didn't maybe buy, maybe move it a little further over than opposed to where you have it now?
Well, this was submitted to us by Blue &amp; Associates for the lot split. We take it as it is. We do try to make recommendations from that standpoint, but when they submitted to us, they said they wanted to submit the variance for this particular reason. So we do not go back and ask for a move of the property line adjustment or anything.
And as I see it, I mean, just my observation is there's a septic field line there, so they didn't feel the, I'm just guessing, they didn't feel the liberty to offset it very much, even though that would have given them a little more distance, but I understand. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Very good. Seeing none, I will ask for roll call.
Okay, this is a motion to-
This is for the approval of the variances for the property at 2536 Brush Creek Road.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I am going to close the Board of Zoning Adjustments meeting, and I am going to open up the Planning Commission meeting. And item number one is, the applicant is requesting to rezone 10.46 acres, R3, to Agricultural, located at 1278 Piazza Road. Now, this is strictly for the rezoning from residential to agricultural.
R3 to agriculture. That's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
So what you will have before you, once again, these are two separate items. One will be a rezone. The second will be a conditional use. Even though they do play together, they will be voted on separately. This first one here, the synopsis of this, he's wanting to desire to rezone 10.46 acres, develop an eight-pad site for an RV park at the northeast part of the property. Once again, the conditional use must be approved for the RV park. But once again, this is strictly for the rezone, to move it from R3 to agriculture. As we reviewed all of this, we feel like going forward, future land use should not be any problems. So we do recommend the rezone from R3 to Agriculture.
And at this time, I have to open it up to the public to discuss this. Sir, I'll get to you in a minute when we get to the applicant's side of it. So is there anybody that would like to reiterate what they talked about during the public?
On this deal here, is that for the actual pads for the, or is it, the rezoning this for what, I don't understand, for what reason?
Okay, right now, it's zoned for residential in order to get to what their end use is going to be. Agricultural was the piece to look at, then to come in with a conditional use request.
Conditional use would open it up for traffic to go back through that way.
Conditional use would open it up for the opportunity for, yeah.
So that means that's the way that it's gonna have to get the traffic into this suggested area for the RV park?
If everything is approved, it would have to go through a large-scale development, my understanding. So that would have to go through the city's large-scale development process, which would, they would have to, they would have to abide by our rules and regulations and everything on that. So it's a very cumbersome process to have to go through on that piece of it, so.
Well, the L-shaped part of it's got me a little concerned as far as if they're gonna use it for conditional use later, for what I'm thinking they're gonna do. Getting up there and then getting people turned around and back out of there seems like it's gonna be a problem. Plus, I think that area is kind of a graded deal as far as runoff, as far as if there's gonna be curbs, stuff like that for that, because that's gonna be probably concrete or paved, I imagine, for them people to, because they're not gonna drive through a mud field to get up there to that area. So they're gonna have to have some kind of.
That's correct. They'll have to have some type of a road to go up through there. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it would come up through that L shape, because it would be part of the agricultural zone piece of it.
And let me state, this is, not to interrupt the public portion of this, but this was originally when we first talked, talked to Grant and his wife, and, you know, we tried to come up with maybe what the best fit, and we would do that with any citizen, as if they come to the planning department, what's gonna be the best fit? Will this work? Our original thought was maybe to put this into commercial, which we know that everybody was very against doing this into commercial. Our code states that if they want to do this, they do have to apply for a conditional use. Within the conditional use, agriculture was the only thing that would fit. It would not fit with the current zoning as is, so that's why we're looking at agriculture. So you have to keep the two things separate as you're thinking about this. But going forward, if one passes, let's say the zoning passes, the conditional use does not, they still have an agriculture piece of land.
Very good. Any other comments from citizens? Not yet. We'll get to you. We'll get you in just a second. It's Grant, Grant, right? Hang on, Grant. We're gonna get you, okay? Yeah, I'm gonna ask for a motion by the Commission.
Motion to approve residential to agricultural rezone.
Second. Motion second. Now, Mr. Grant, I will, I will ask you to come up and if you'd like to.
Was that, was that James second?
That was Josh.
Josh.
Motion, Tom seconded.
There you go. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name's Grant Siemens and my wife Kimberly, 1278 Piazza Road. And I'm sorry I jumped the gun twice. I didn't think we were going to vote on the rezone, but I just jumped the gun. I apologize. And first of all, I just, I want to thank the Planning Commission for allowing us to present this application for rezoning. And I also appreciate each of you willing to take your time to serve on this important commission. And secondly, I do, I sincerely thank our friends and neighbors for taking time to be here, whether it's simply to listen or express opposition or support for our proposal. Besides that, this is one way to have a community get together. As far as the rezoning, and I'm kind of in a little bit of a paradox here, I, we were informed last Wednesday that, as Mr. Spurlock, as we met with him, that the planning office had failed to include the CUP as part of the rezoning request. So that's why we're doing it in two steps. We initially applied as one unit on this, but if my memory serves me correct, and I believe it is, when we moved to our home on Piazza Road, our property and all adjacent land was zoned agricultural. We do not have any estate lots or anything of that nature. It was all agricultural. When the city adopted the current zoning map under ordinance 2017-12-666, it changed this parcel to residential three, defined as, of course, single-family residential development on medium-sized lots of at least 9,600 square feet with density not to exceed three units per acre. We are applying to regrettably rezone this 10.46 acres back from R3 to agricultural. In doing so, we wish to preserve the agricultural resources of our land and expand our neighborhood's holding zone. We will then be, of course, proposing a private planned park in the northeastern corner of this parcel that will not include any permanent structures or dwellings, meaning that this parcel could easily revert to R3 at a later date to meet the future land use plan. So I look forward to presenting the details of our CUP application following the hearing on this rezoning application. And like I said, that's kind of where I'm caught in the middle here a little bit. I would like to go ahead and address some of the issues stated. We have a narrative that I would like to present to you, but I don't know if the Commission would allow that to be at this time, or if you would prefer to move forward with the rezoning request for agricultural and then allow me that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's, I'll give the Commission some time to ask some questions that may, may come about on, asking you on that as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
If you did that, it'd be great. Thank you, sir. Okay, Commission, I will open it up for y'all for questions, concerns.
Can I ask Mr. Siemens a question?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Siemens, if your CUP is denied, do you still want this land to be agriculture? I hate that we have to.
Fair question.
Put a horse before the.
No, that's a fair question. I've given that a lot of consideration and I'll, if I'm allowed to move forward into the CUP, that's, when we begin to look at different uses for our property, including now that we are zoned R3, I mean, we looked at doing a development. Actually, I prefer to leave our land wide open. My wife and I, we, good Lord willing, plan to spend the rest of our days out there. And I, at my point in life, do not care to have a full-scale R3 development. I think that would have a significant impact on this, on this street, should that, and I mean, it's coming. It's coming, and we can talk about that a little bit later. But as far as will I ask to go ahead and keep it agricultural, I'm definitely considering that. I'll, you know, I'm just gonna have to kind of evaluate that as it comes along. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes. A couple of things, just an observation. I think an agrarian use, if you do have an agrarian use, I think the public probably knows, there's farm equipment and there's trucks that would be, but not frequent, but is something that's a part of as a farm. But I think it'd be fitting for that to be reverted, because if Tonny Town is kind of the country feel, I think kind of the, one of the trajectories that I see for such towns as Tonny Town, and not only as expressed, but in, across many places, in being in the real estate field, is that more localized farming would take place. This is perfectly set for a nice orchard or what have you, local growing. So, but just, you know, farm trucks and equipment, they're not heavy at all in terms of the traffic. But I just, that's just a little comment of observation that, you know, it's something that you, is another way, a resource of income for the future, that I think may offer you some good income in the future. There's all, whether it's aquaponics or farming of any kind, I mean, it's just other options that I think may take some traction in the future.
And I would just say that those are other considerations of putting in some type of a farming operation. I currently allow one of our neighbors to hay the field, and, which I'm grateful for somebody to get the use out of that. I grew up on a little 30-acre farm. I know, I know how to raise cows, and I've thought about that too, but, but yes.
Rise of beef, it might be just pay in the near future.
Very good. Thank you. Tom? Anybody else? Josh?
I agree with Tom, everything Tom said. I think everybody here knows I'm a big fan of ag anyway. But I did look up, a little fun fact, agriculture contributes to about 1.5 trillion to the US economy. So it's about, takes out about 6% of our GDP every year. But I agree with Tom.
Okay.
Hey, Brad, I have a question for you. So as I, as I look at this, well, first of all, we know Tonny Town's growing.
Yes.
We know lots are being looked at to build houses on. That L shape could be a pretty good little subdivision for you. If it's zoned agriculture, is there a waiting period to then go back to R3?
Well, let me make a comment on how this will work. I mean, obviously, if you guys decide to pass this tonight, it still has to be approved through City Council. And for some reason, and not to jump the, jump the, jump the horse here, but if the CUP is denied, and whether Grant and his wife wants to go forward with that, you know, it could be very dropped from the City Council, where it will, it will not get rezoned at all. So like I said, that'll, that'll be up to them if they want to move forward with the rezone. If you guys approve and the CUP is denied, it still would have to have City Council approval. And if they decide that it's not worth it, then it can just fall by the wayside and not be resumed.
Brad, if, if, let's say that he decided to leave it and not get it approved to ag at the council or something happened, he could still have a gurian, he could still farm it. Is this true or false? Is this, would he be able to make a little farm out of it if he?
Well, you know, depending on what code, what code, within our city code, yes. I mean, we'd have to look and see what's acceptable in the R3 zoning.
Right.
Yes. That answer your question?
Yeah. People are paying a lot of money for property to build houses on.
Sure.
So whatever you decide to do.
This is their land that's strictly up to whatever they want to do.
Yeah. Okay.
We try to make the best fit for it.
Any other questions, concerns, or comments? Seeing none, I will ask for roll call on the rezoning request from R3 to agricultural at the 1278 Piazza. Please.
I'll make a motion that we rezone.
We've already done it.
Oh, excuse me.
We've already done it. We're gonna roll call, not a recall.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
We'll move to the City Council.
Okay, item number two is a conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use to develop an eight-pad site for an RV park at the northeast corner of 1278 Piazza Road. Mr. Brad?
Okay, this is the second part of what we were talking about, and you've heard a lot of comments. And first, let me say, this is why the city government works. Everybody has a chance to voice their opinion, may not always agree with what the planning wants to do, or City, City Planning Commission or City Council, but you guys have a voice. And thank you very much for coming out. As we've looked at this, once again, as we decided what would be the best fit in rezoning this to agriculture, this is why our conditional use is set up for this way. First, let me say, in our code, we do not have a specific RV condition. We do have for outdoor recreation, bed and breakfast, a couple of things that we can basically utilize. So this is what we're trying to do. If applicant is requesting the CUP approval to construct eight pad site, RV site on the northeast corner of the parcel, the entrance will be off Piazza Road and require development on large-scale development. Once again, talks about the property ownership and also having the condition of this being rezoned to agriculture. Many things have went into our decision. We've talked to Grant and Kimberly regarding this. Safety, obviously, was a big issue that we've heard a lot about. We've discussed measures in what to look forward to going forward. We've looked at the master street plan, which we did hear about Don Tyson, but who knows when that's gonna take place? I know Springdale's got their portion of it, but it is on our master street plan for it to move forward. So there are conditions out there that would be beneficial to this. But once again, this is up to you, what you guys wanted to decide. What we have recommended is that this will be based on a large-scale development submittal and for us to review this to see if this will work. But on your, part of your voting will be to prove it based on that condition of accepting a large-scale development plan. Okay?
Thank you, Brad. I will open it up for a public comment if you'd like to. Any citizens would like to comment on this specific item?
My name's Rich Piazza. What I'm also wondering is, you know, there's not any sewer down there, and I have heard through hearsay, evidently you may tell us more later, a couple 1,500 gallon tanks of sewer system for you?
I'll be happy to.
Yeah, but anyway, you know, this is what, you know, we're trying to get away from sewer systems. You know, I'll hook up to the sewer as soon as they get it our way. I just think that's the wrong way to plan an RV park.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Candace Holt, and I live at 484 Frizzo in the Rest Brook subdivision. I'm from a very small town. I moved here in 2020. I love Tonny Town. It does remind me of home, which is population like 1,000 people. And I love the agricultural area. My husband grew up farming, so it's perfect for us. But one of my concerns also is how are they vetting the people that stay there? You know, we have families, we have children. I grew up, again, small town, lots of mobile home, lots of people in RVs and lots of criminals. And I just want to ask that question for the safety of our children. There's a school really close by, and I think that's, you know, one thing, and you may have answers for that, but if you go camping, you don't do a background check. So just kind of one of those questions that I feel like is important, being that close to so many kids.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion before we discuss, Commission.
I'm making a motion to approve the CUP for, well, can't find the address, parcel
1278 Piazza Road. Very good. Got a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Second by Donnie. I'll open it up for discussion. Do you want to hear from Mr. Grant, or you got questions for him?
I have a question for our engineer.
Okay, you can ask it.
I've driven the road a couple of times, and by no means am I a road authority. In your professional opinion, how will this road hold up to such traffic?
Hello, can I hear you? Zach Johnson, city engineer. Piazza is, is a, is a smaller road, probably underdeveloped compared to our master street plan. I don't think there's any to die in that. Wear and tear is based on a lot of different factors, one big one's traffic counts, right? I don't, honestly, with eight RV lots, I don't think that's gonna be a major traffic count increase on the Piazza Road. So I don't see that being a major factor into the ultimate detriment of Piazza Road. It's only eight lots. There might be some increased traffic, but compared to the limited residential area, I don't think that's a big difference.
What about an A coach coming down that road and making a pivot?
Sir?
Containing.
Right now, it's, it's the Commission talking. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you and be rude about it, so let's us get through this, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir.
I can, I can offer a comment if you like on the, on the turnaround. Going down, we're talking through street, part of the LSD and what we've talked about is if this is approved, following up with an LSD, things like turnaround on Piazza are gonna be down there.
Down the road and making that turn, any, any, because I've grown a truck for 20 years. When I pivot, those tires take that road. That road's like three inches thick.
Sure.
And it's not gonna take one or two times within people coming in there that we're gonna have.
Sure.
You've got a problem.
Sure. It'd be something we look at, the LSD, if it takes maybe an improvement in the direct vicinity of the turn, of the access port for this, it could be a requirement of the LSD, but until we get there, it's something we should gotta look at.
Thank you, Zach.
I have a question for Zach.
Stay there, Zach. Candy?
Have you talked to the fire chief? What does he think about?
He said it's tight, but he could get a fire truck down there, so.
Can he get one back out?
Well, part of the LSD is gonna be a turnaround with the. Well, part of the LSD is gonna be a turnaround with, with the project, right? So, he can get, I think, right now, you're, I think we're debating a use on the road. It's gonna be eight RV parks. Things like turnarounds and fire protection is something we can address specifically with an LSD park.
I have a question, Mr. Siemens. We've heard a lot of concerns about safety, and I've read through your proposal on how you're going to manage this RV park. My question is, is how are you gonna enforce what you're gonna put in place?
If I may just have the liberty, we've heard a lot of public comment, and I appreciate that, I really do. But, if I may be allowed to address some of these specific points and have a little liberty with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So, and again, I, I do appreciate everybody's comments. And listen, any time a development of any scale or type is proposed, it's always met with opposition. I, I, I understand that. By nature, we tend to make assumptions, and our minds then go to a worst case scenario because we, we fear what we do not know. Even the suggestion of an RV park, it conjures visions of, you know, Cousin Eddie pulling into the Griswolds or a trailer park or a sardine packed KOA with all sorts of activities going on. So, that's why I said I appreciate the, the opportunity to address some of those fears as well as attempt to give clarity as to what we envision this park to be, how it will be unique, why we believe it is a good fit and use of our property. And then continue to answer any questions that the, that the commission might have so that you can make an informed decision. Because the concerns expressed, quite honestly, are the same ones my wife and I have considered and have continued to discuss since we began the idea for this. So, if you allow me, I want to give just, just a little brief background and then talk about our vision for this and then address some of those, those concerns such as traffic and impact on the road, the clientele, things of that nature. We moved our family to Piazza Road 11 years ago. We did not build a new home, but instead, we purchased a foreclosure property. The home was built in the light, in the late 1980s. It was in disrepair and uninhabitable. My wife and I have worked very hard to renovate and restore this house as well, as well as reclaim the overgrown land. There was no driveway to the home. It was just a trail out through the field. The pavement on Piazza ended just south of Ralph and Nancy Pendgraf's home, where the previous city limits ended. That last quarter mile or so of Piazza was pretty rough dirt road. It had protruding jagged rocks, and after it rained, it was a mud hole. We were the second to last house on the road at that time, surrounded otherwise by open farmland. And as Ms. McLean, as she, McFalls, I'm so sorry. As Ms. McFalls said, I correct myself, there was the mobile home that was back up behind there by the silo. That was the only other residence down there. Since then, following the subdivision and some rezoning of about 100 acres of agricultural farmland, we've seen eight new homes built, seven of which are within view of my front porch. One soon to come out of the ground and another one being planned. Additionally, five metal agricultural shop type buildings have been erected. An old mobile home has been replaced with another used mobile home and an existing metal agricultural shop building that now has a portion of it used as a private residence. I understand the right of property owners to reasonably utilize their property or their own land within the permitted uses, and that growth is both necessary and inevitable. It's unique because it's made our neighborhood kind of eclectic. We now have old generational homesteads. We have new homes, 30-year-old homes, barns, barn dominiums, mobile homes, cows and a poultry farm. Again, we've, you know, we're replying to, applying to regressively rezone this property back to agricultural. And the CUP, obviously, that we're seeking is for an eight-site secluded upscale RV retreat that parallels those permission, those permitted conditions that have been discussed. Outdoor recreation, bed and breakfast, which is really hospitality, park, even golf course that are found in the city's flow chart as allowable CUPs. So, and as I mentioned earlier, when Kimberly and I began to look at different ideas for the use of this land, housing development or a farm enterprise, we wanted to maintain the integrity of the beautiful and peaceful surroundings. As I mentioned, we hope to spend the end of our days there. We also know that we have a purpose or a passion for serving, for hosting and customer service. We built our previous business Heritage Funeral Home on excellence in these areas. I believe Kimberly and I have an eye for how to do things right. What we also know is that at our age, we don't need a major enterprise or development to manage. Instead, we wanted to create something that we could take care of ourselves, that would provide a beneficial service to our community and support Tonny Town's small businesses and allow us to continue what we do best, and that's serve people. And so, that's what led to the idea of this upscale boutique style park that caters exclusively to short-term leisurely RVers. So, it's, it's a location and appearance, obviously, we don't have a, a large scale site plan to give you because of the, kind of the ambiguous circumstance we're under. But, at eight sites, the park itself will utilize roughly one acre or a football field sized portion of this 10 and a half acres. It'll be positioned in the northeasternmost part of our property, 980 feet off of Piazza Road, against a natural ravine and bordered by a heavily wooded area along the northeast properties. What will be seen from the street is a winding country lane that disappears up and over the hayfield. There'll be no streetlights in the park nor along the driveway. The nearest private residence to the park is our personal home at about 400 feet to the west. No structures such as a bath or laundry house, office, garage, shop or shed is gonna be erected. Each of these eight sites will be screened and separated by green space and landscaped with shrubbery and trees around a private patio area. The outside perimeter of the loop driveway around the park will also be planted with trees to give a secluded environment for the, for the guests as well as to create a, a natural screen from the community. Tents, banners, flags, pet kennels, pop-up canopies, not allowed. Operating off-road vehicles such as ATVs, dirt bikes, side-by-sides will not be allowed anywhere on the property or the driveway. So, of these, of the opposition that's, that's, you know, been addressed or has been expressed and, you know, number one would, would be the traffic, and I just have just a couple of points on traffic. Number one, Piazza Road is a public street. Number two, the distance from Fletcher Avenue commencing southward on Piazza to this planned point of ingress egress for this park is approximately 73 hundredths of a mile. Of this distance, the first 55 hundredths or a little over a half a mile measures 19 feet wide. The street then narrows to 18 feet wide for the remainder of Piazza Road that was paved about nine years ago. But, the portion of this 18-wide section of street that will be impacted by traffic from our guests will be 18 hundredths of a mile or about 950 feet. Thirdly, it seems as though it's already been decided that Piazza Road would accommodate an increase in traffic due to the R3 zoning six years ago of 12 parcels that are served by this street. This includes our total 18 and a half acres. So, if we take that little L-shaped parcel that we have and we add in our other eight, we have 18 and a half acres. We were changed from agricultural to R3. It also includes 30 acres at the very end of the street and approximately an additional 55 acres that neighbor us immediately to our north, plus another 40 acres on the southwest corner of East Fletcher and Piazza. That is also our three. So, in our 11 years out on this road, we've experienced a noticeable increase in traffic from the eight and soon to be 10 new homes that have been built over the last five years. This includes folks traveling to and from work, school, ball practice, grocery runs, errands, visiting guests, not to mention the daily traffic from front door services like FedEx, UPS, Amazon. Additionally, we have a poultry farm that's regularly serviced by 18-wheeler live hauls and, and feed semis. We have another neighbor who's a landscape contractor that daily drives a one-ton truck with a HD tandem axle trailer hauling a skid steer as well as tractors moving farm equipment and round bales the entire length of the street. Number four, we've touched on that a little bit. As early as 2010, and according to our current master street plan adopted in 2018, Piazza Road is, is designated as an eventual collector road or collector street between Fletcher, which is also a collector, and the extension eastward of Kelly Road, which will be a minor arterial that aligns with Don Tyson Parkway. It's not a subject of if, but when, I understand that. But, the city planning office has stated that Piazza Road is a crucial part of the master street plan. And, of course, the connection of East Fletcher to West Fletcher is one of the next streets the city has planned to construct. Fifthly, according to averages, the type of, averages, guests of the type of park we're planning typically stay three and a half to seven days. Some studies say five to 10 days in park, during which time they're gonna be driving a pickup truck or a car that was towed, driven, driven for day trips and outings. So, it's not going to be a constant parade of, of RV rigs. RVers typically avoid peak traffic hours. Speed limit, yeah. Piazza Road has a posted speed limit of 35, and it's not placed probably in the most ideal area. I would add that earlier this year, we did have a not-through-street sign finally posted because we've seen many cars that are just kind of, I wonder where this road goes, and obviously, it goes nowhere. So, that has hopefully helped with that. Personally, I, I've always thought that our road should be posted at 30 miles per hour. That's a discussion for another day, but it is posted at 35. Operators of RVs don't drive at high speeds. I mean, especially on municipal or rural roads. We have five neighbors that own travel trailers on our, on our road, and I'm sure they would agree with that. Additionally, just a quick Google search, you'll find multiple studies that can be found that demonstrate how narrower municipal streets are actually proven safer for motorists and pedestrians. And, of course, by contrast, if we were to propose a large scale development of just eight homes and keep this R3, I think we would understand that would have a significantly higher impact on the street in daily trips than the park we're proposing. It's really not that the road can't handle the increase in traffic. It's, it's understandable that those who oppose our plan just don't, we don't want the traffic. But, the increase in traffic is coming regardless. Again, this Piazza Road is a public street. It's not a private road or within a subdivision that's regulated by HOA. As far as screening the clientele, at just eight sites, this park is gonna be very unique because we have the ability to be selective of our guests. The park will first and foremost be in my backyard. Bellicera is only gonna permit guests who travel, whose travel trailers and motor coaches are a minimum of 24 feet interior length, no older than 10 model years and four season rated. These units must be pre-approved in advance when reservations are made and before entry in our park is allowed. So, what does this mean? Only higher-end units are permitted. The folks who tour and travel with this class of RV are typically retired or semi-retired couples who can afford our higher-than-average park rates. They desire a safe and secure and well-managed park. It will be guests who want to spend a few days enjoying Tonny Town in northwest Arkansas in a secluded country setting, the kind of folks who don't trash but pick up trash, not the weekend party campers at the lake. Kimberly and I will be the onsite managers of this park. We would not risk the value and security of our property nor our neighbors. There was another concern about opening up business to Piazza Road. Yes, we hope to provide ourselves an income with Bellicera. And you know, anybody else has the right to follow the procedures set forth by the city within their zoning classification to reasonably use their property, including that of a financial benefit, be it a large-scale development or a mom and pop for the benefit of mom and pop. We talked a little bit about, you know, other possibilities, yeah. If agriculturally zoned property owner wanted to develop a Yucca Pickett strawberry farm and charge $40 a flat, or if he wanted, another farmer wanted to erect a large hay barn to store the hay that he cuts and then later sells, they have that right. Now, I may not like the traffic that that creates or the barn obstructing my view, just as my neighbor might not like the color or the style of my house. But, it's the property owner's right to use their property within allowable guidelines that can include providing themselves a living. While we're on the subject of economics, I think it's important to point out that we know Tonny Town is experiencing growing pains. And the cure for many of those pains is much-needed revenue. Our city's debt is over $1,000 per capita. Guests of Bellicera will generate over $4,000 annually, potentially $4,800 annually in sales tax revenue just for staying with us. Now, that may not sound like, may not sound like much, but every opinion of the pop matters. This does not include the additional economic benefit to the city and our local businesses when these visitors go to dinner at one of our restaurants, pick up a bottle of red from the winery, fuel up at the Z-Mart, stop by Dollar General, have their rigs serviced at Wheels or Springdale RV. Diversity of available goods and services is important to the value and the draw of a community. Currently, we don't have any type of an RV park. We don't have any hotels or even a bed and breakfast. We occasionally have some Airbnbs or VRBOs four or five at a time that pop up, including one house on Piazza that was once listed as an Airbnb, but that's it. Tourism and hospitality are one of those important elements of a healthy community. Even just a little eight-site, eight-site park like Bellicera helps to make Tonny Town a more well-rounded community. So, we're attempting to fill a need with it. We can promote then the various attractions around here, our museum, the grape festival, restaurants, the antique stores. I say that because that's where my wife likes to hang out. And, of course, other things in our area, the naturals, crystal, crystal bridges, craft fairs and so on. So, we're asking for rezoning with conditions and taking on risk by investing our time and money in this project, not just to provide ourselves with an income, but we want to invest in Tonny Town, quite honestly. And we promote, want to promote its rich heritage. And thus, the name Beautiful Evening, that's what Bellicera means, and it's on Piazza in Tonny Town. So, to summarize, Kimberly and I have always taken pride and care in what we do. We take that very seriously. We value our home and our property as well as that of our neighbors. We believe this rezoning and this plan fits within this area and preserves the open space against future development. It will provide a positive benefit to the community. When the tide comes in, all ships rise. And I would be happy if there are questions about gross vehicle weights and impacts on the road, property values, I, I can address some of those if, if that's, if that would be worthwhile. Commission, what, what questions do y'all have?
So.
Yes, Candy?
You, you could answer questions about property values, what it would do for property values?
Something we've considered, yes. And what I would have to say about property values, I don't honestly know of any method to predict an impact on property values. I've got a good friend that is a, is a real turn of developer. I'm not, but I sought some advice from him, but impact, be it negative, positive or static, I can't honestly answer that. That it will lower property value stems from the idea of aesthetics or transient populations. Like I said, we think of, you know, Cousin Eddie coming down the road. But, we can make an argument that a well-managed and maintained park can be an asset, you know, regardless. The concept we're planning is very unique, and it can't really be compared with what people envision of an RV park. The, you know, ultimately, we live in one of the most desirable communities in the region, and we, we know where our property values continue to trend. Josh?
I'm just gonna make a comment and then, then I'm gonna listen, a couple of comments and how it kind of works in my head. But, on one hand, like, I, I am 100% pro property rights. It's your property. Me personally, I view it differently than a, like a developer coming in asking. It means something. To me, it does. And if I, if I want to do something on my property and somebody told me no, I'm, I'm honestly, I've said it 1,000 times, I'm the kind of guy that thinks government gets in the way. That's what I think. So, I, I support what you're doing here. On the other hand, everybody has heard me say it 1,000 times, that I'm power of the people. Like, I'm, I'm very, 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 my thoughts get weighted when the majority of your street shows up and says, you know, they don't want it. And if roles were reversed, you know, I, I don't know, because I'm 50/50. Everything you said is right.
We've asked ourselves that same thing, too.
I believe you 100%. Everything they said. Everything they said is correct. I believe them 100%. That's where I'm at with it.
Very good. Tom?
I have personally inspected over eight, well, I was very interested in getting in the RV park industry. I've been over to 80 in the southeast and to the Midwest over the past eight years. And I've seen the bad, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I have locally had them approved in very difficult situations. I've also got blown out because I didn't, I trusted the landowner to do his homework, and he didn't do it. And, but I've learned that the proper planning into the concern of this, of those who may say, "We don't know who's going to be living there, who's going to be staying there." I can tell you that, first of all, for you who know this couple, you respect them. You respect the way they keep their property, and it goes to stand that they're going to... He was very articulate in how he presented this, very planned, good plans, good strategy typically lead to good success. What, what I see here is that he's tucked it back up out of the way so the neighbors aren't really looking at anything that's, you know, the diminished property values in principle. I don't think that's going, as a real estate person, I don't, my, my opinion is that it's not going to hurt that, that. I want to say, so, so good use of an RV park, we need RV parks. And they do, they help drive, people can, for those who are looking to live here, those who want to recreate here, there's a lot of overflow. Contractors are paying a lot more money to, to be in a really good area these days all over, and obviously with the prices. I mean, he, he's going to vet them, and can they be vetted? To a large degree, yes. I will say this, I, I think that the planning commissions should consider, and I recommended it to Zach in some of our codes, in all the other cities, I've noticed that they put plant, they put RV parks and mobile home parks in the same zoning. My, my, my question is why? And I, and I believe it's, I don't like it together because they're variant, there's a conditional use permit.
We don't, we don't have that, right? With Tonny Town, we don't have an RV section.
I know.
So it's not part of the mobile home, so...
That, that's what I'm saying. I think they ought to be separated in the future. This is, I'm just saying that. But we don't, but because if something happens to you, somebody could convert it to a mobile home park later and/or it may run down or these kind of things. Conditional use permit means that they have teeth to say, "You gotta do this or else." Okay, and we know that.
Do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to give my opinion about the whole deal, but I, I think, I understand the opposition of the neighbors, transient areas, and the road traffic. In principle, we like to see them on higher traffic corridors. I don't really have any, eight, eight RVs versus a lot of densities of, if he had more homes, he'd have more cars. You know, I think that's debatable. I think he's, I think he's thought it very well. So, I mean, you know, in principle, I would say I'd like to see these of higher traffic, easier in-and-out kind of roads, but he's certainly thought it through. But thank you for listening to, to my, you know, just, just some of my thoughts here.
Thanks, Tom. Donnie?
You, I, I would expect you are a good citizen of Tonny Town, both, both of you. In my little over one year on the planning commission, you've made the best preparation and presentation I've ever, I've seen. I applaud you on that. The, I'm with Josh. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of on, I'm on the fence.
Yeah.
I'm 50/50. Tonny Town's growing. Police, fire, roads, a lot of things, a lot of things need revenue, very pro-revenue. This is a residential area. It's, it's the other part that I debate in my brain on. And I don't, I don't, I don't feel as much concerned about the street. The city will take care of the street. The traffic's going to be there. There's going to be more houses built on that, on that street.
Absolutely.
And Fletcher Road is going to have a lot of growth. So it's going to get crowded. Sorry, but get, get ready, get, get ready. So that, my, my point is, I, I'm, I'm with Josh. I'm just not sure where I stand with a vote right now.
Understand.
And I certainly understand that part, as I own acreage myself, I understand that part of, if you own the property, you ought to have a say in what you want to do with your property. So however this goes, I, I applaud the two of you for what you've done to prepare and present this, and tough vote, in my opinion.
Give thanks.
Hang on, just a second, James.
You good?
Okay.
I do have a question.
You do have one question?
I do.
Okay.
For you.
You can ask me.
If this is denied, and at, when kids, just for example, when Don Tyson is, when it gets expanded through here, or is there another timeline or a condition that he could come back and resubmit?
Okay, so the agricultural, automatically goes to city council. So they have to approve even the, even though we approved the moving for residential agricultural, that goes to city council.
Okay.
This here, too, if we deny, he could appeal and take that to city council. And if we approve, it still has to go to city council for their approval. So we are not the end of, of this piece tonight. We are a piece of the puzzle, but not the end.
This is step one.
That's correct.
Right. And, and if they deny, do conditions change if, for the future, for him? If, if, they could change, and he might could get this approved at a later date, should the council deny? I mean, they, is there a time, is there a...
I don't think there's a time limit on that.
So he can come back later and ask, just, just ask him.
Yeah, no, there's not.
If I remember, I don't know if it's six months before they reapply.
Zach, did you have something you wanted to say?
I'd have to look it up specifically, but usually under requests like this and other places, six months to a year.
Okay. Okay. So we'd have to settle for six months to a year before they could do anything else to, to reapply?
If it's denied.
Okay, very good. That's just off the top of our heads, right? That's not looking at the code right now, so don't hold us against that.
I do, I do have one more question.
Yes, sir, Donnie.
You said that you, you two will manage it, but now you, you own a funeral home and operate a funeral home business, so you will not be there all the time, right?
I retired a year, almost a year and a half ago after 35 years. 22 of those years were here in northwest Arkansas. I grew up in a small, little town in southwest Colorado, but this is home.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for roll call, and this is for the approval of the...
His question wasn't answered about the enforcement, James's question. I would like to hear an answer to that, if he winds up with an Uncle Eddie.
Okay.
That's a fair question. So let's just talk a little bit, and get back to my... Couldn't ever decide if I wanted a computer or the, or the hard paper. Computer often crashes, though, so... You know, really, as far as, as far as how this will be enforced, it's, you know, any, any reservation is going to be made on, you know, online. And we'll have an opportunity to communicate with guests to find out, why, why are you coming to town? You know, how long do you plan to stay? We're going to require photographs of the rig to verify that what they're saying they're driving in is indeed what shows up. And now, as far as running background checks, I don't think you can legally, legally do that, but, you know, we, we will be providing them with the rules and regulations, and we've made some revisions to, to what might have been shown on that narrative, but we'll be there to make sure that curfews and check-in and checkout times are observed, and, and to just be there to, to regulate and oversee what, what's taking place on the, on the day-to-day in the park. And you're going to find that most people, when they, when they come in, whether they're spending three days or two weeks there, that, you know, in the mornings, they're going to get up, do their thing, and then they're going to be heading out for, you know, day trips and outings for whatever activities they're in town for, be it mountain biking up in Bentonville, or coming in for a concert, or, you know, coming in for grape festival.
When you say short-term, is there a length of time that you're going to limit them to?
We will be limiting that to 60 days. There, and that's one of the things that, you know, if you drive up 112 towards, towards Cave.
Springs.
Yeah, you know, at the creeks there. If you, if you drive in, they have, they have size restrictions on their rigs and age restrictions, but they have people that are living there year-round. There will not be any permanent residents, period. You cannot get mail. You can, yeah, no, absolutely not. We wouldn't, we would not allow that at all, because that takes away from the unique character of what we're trying to, to develop.
But it's still income, whether they stay over the 60 or not.
Yeah, yeah.
And at night times, when somebody wants to sit around the fire and maybe get a little loud?
We have, we will impose curfews, and it's spelled out in our guidelines at curf, you know, quiet times are at 10. And I mean, for the most part, we're going to be looking at our more seasoned citizens that are going to be, and I, my wife, she's usually in bed before 10, so... And of course, if, if something unruly does happen, we would obviously be, be calling for, you know, the, for law enforcement to, to take care of, you know, unruly drunkenness isn't allowed anywhere. You know, if there's a domestic dispute in a house, or be it down over here at the city park, you know, that's, that's something that's not tolerable. Did you have something?
Any other?
Question.
Commission, would you like to have, allow a citizen to ask a question? I'm asking, I'm asking the commission as a whole, so I'm not, I'm not trying to be...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Come on, Patty. Not trying to be rude.
I'm Patty Hatfield. I live at 1359 Piazza Road, and we've been neighbors with Grant and Kimberly twice now. We lived in another subdivision where they were, so we know they are great people. But my question is, does conditional use transfer with the sale of, of the property? So let's just say they get tired of this and they sell the property. The next resident might not be as good to take care of people that are coming and going as, as the...
So under agricultural, there are certain things that you can do on a property, and then you have conditional uses...
Right.
...that you have to apply for. So right now, it's, it's the conditional use of an RV, eight, eight slats, that's it.
Right.
So if someone wants to come in and, and add to that or do something, they have to come in and reapply for that, so that's...
For the whole thing.
For that whole 10 acres.
Or they would just be taking on the eight that are already existing under that conditional use.
Correct. Yeah. Does that make sense? Yeah.
May I address that, too?
Yes, sir.
And Patty, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's something I've thought about, too. So Kimberly and I both get squished, what happens? What keeps this from expanding to something else? And I've thought about the idea of, you know, writing in a restrictive covenant on the deed of trust on that. If the property, you know, transfers upon both of our demise to somebody other than our children, then, then it nullifies this conditional use, because I want to protect it for what it is and what I don't want it to be. Like I said, our intention is to keep this property open and, and continue the peace that we all enjoy out on Piazza Road.
Very good. I'm definitely not a lawyer, so I could not tell you the ins and...
Nor would I play one on TV.
That's exactly right. Is that it? Candy?
I just, I, I, I had a, a comment as well. I'm kind of with Josh and Donnie. It's, you've done a great job planning all this out, and, and, but how much weight do we have to give the residents? I mean, I didn't know there were so many people that lived on Piazza. And that's, that's making the decision really difficult.
And I, and I appreciate that. I mean, in just 11 short years we've been there, the population on Piazza's almost doubled with, with a new, with the construction of new homes. And, and, and we all understand that it is easier to, to gather support of opposition than it is to gather that of support. I've talked to some other neighbors that's kind of neutral, and, and I appreciate that, and if they're not comfortable expressing, that's neither here nor there. I do appreciate everybody not bringing pitchforks and torches. But, no. But, no, and, and listen, like I said, even from the beginning, the concerns expressed are the same concerns we've had. This is, this is our home. This is, we love it out there. We've worked very hard to reclaim what we've had and dispose of what was left behind, and we want to continue to cultivate our property and, and continue to hay what portion, should this be passed, continue to allow hay for what portion is, is not dedicated for the, for the site, and, and make good use of the property.
Very good. Now, one more, Candy, come on.
One more.
Go ahead.
And this is for you, Brad, I suppose. He's got all these great plans, and I know they'll have to do an LSD, but what if he doesn't do all that stuff that he says he's going to do?
Yeah, part of this condition is that he has to submit this. We will do our due diligence in reviewing this, and we will have to bring this back before you two get it approved. And if there's anything that's out of the code or anything that does not meet standard, you know, obviously, you have that right to deny at that time as well. First, let me say this, too. I don't know, as far as this goes, when you make this vote tonight, once again, it does, Grant and Kimberly have told me they're going to be out next month, so this will not go to the immediate city council. So I will say citizens will have a couple of months to resonate on this a little bit. Maybe something he said tonight has changed their mind, I don't know, I'm not trying to get into that, but you will have another opportunity to speak at city council. So with that being said, I don't know if that'll sway anyway, but part of that condition is he has to submit a large-scale development in which we have to approve, and which we will have to bring back for planning commission to be approved.
Very good. Thank you, Brad.
One more.
You bet, Candy, come on.
Grant, have you, I guess I should say Mr. Siemens?
No.
Have you done this sales job to all of these people?
I, I have tried to approach a handful, and I, and quite honestly, I've had, one, two, three, four, that have come to the house to sit and visit. And, and listen, I appreciate that. We're, I, I know I may, may appear from the distance to be an ogre, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm very approachable, and I want to share and make an understanding, and I, and but at the same time, I have been a little apprehensive in, in approaching some, just because, you know, I immediately knew that, and I knew we would face pushback on that. I, I understand that. And like, like, you know, Mr. Crane said, you know, we, we, we try to play both sides of the fence, and, and, you know, we have, we have to weigh this with this. It's kind of like the clutch and the gas pedal. You know, you've got to try to feather that and determine what's the proper course of action.
Pam, I don't mean to interrupt, but I was never approached by anyone. I didn't learn about this until yesterday at about 5:00. And he has not approached me.
No, I didn't.
I appreciate that they're great people, but I was not approached.
The sign's been knocked down a couple weeks.
Yeah, the little metal leg snapped off. I drove rebar and kept, trying to keep it...
It was gone a week before that, showed up a few days, and then gone again.
The wind, the wind blew it.
I ride my bike every day.
The wind blew it down, broke the leg.
I retire.
Okay, okay. The wind.
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry. Let's get back on track. Do you have another question, Candy? Okay. Anybody else on the commission? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for roll call on the conditional use permit approving the conditional use.
With the acceptance.
With the acceptance of, of the large-scale development and approval by city council down the road. So I will ask for roll call, please.
Josh?
Epstein.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
It's a great presentation, Mr. Siemens, but I'm going to say no.
Candy? No. Tom?
No.
Donnie?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so the rezoning will go to city council if they, on the June 18th piece of it, and appeal could happen on the conditional use?
Double check, because I know there's a time limit on the appeal, so it's all the way of breaking.
Okay, very good, very good on that. So that is being done. Going, moving forward, the March building activity report, y'all had a chance to review You have any questions for Brad on that?
If you look at it, we've had good success in March with some building permits, and going forward, we have some more large-scale developments that we'll be bringing forward. If you look at it, we've had good success in March with some building permits, and, uh, going forward, we have some more large-scale developments that we'll be bringing forward. Uh, impact fees have been voted on and passed by city council, so we will definitely be seeing, uh, more of that. But the valuations that we have seen over the last month in some of the commercial projects have been fantastic, so just letting you know that.
Then the current planning, y'all got to review that, look at it as well. Got any questions on it? One thing we did add to your packets is a developments agreement, and it's for land development, municipality of Tawny Town. This is an agreement that we are working on to implement for future developments, and developers will have to, um, complete this piece of it as part of the development. So if you could, please review that and have that back by next Monday. That be good?
Yeah.
That be good? Okay. If you got a, if you got anything you want to add or questions on, get with Brad or Mark on that. Make sense? Okay, I will ask for comments. Candy?
I just appreciate everybody coming out and, and saying how you feel, and, and I, I'm sorry, it turned out the way it did for y'all.
Tom?
I, I concur and agree with Candy. You did a tremendous presentation. There's a lot of reasons why I like it. I'm a, I'm pro-RV in a lot of ways, I just kind of had to go with the same decision, and good luck on your appeals. Uh, my, Kevin knows, and I just told Candy, but I, I am offering, well, I'm submitting my resignation letter as of tonight for, um, a near completion, whatever the margin is, for the next month or two, I'll, I'll serve. But it's with both sadness and gratefulness that I hereby submit my notice for vacating my seat for formal resignation. Twelve months ago, our grown children, actually a little, a little longer than that, who were all raised here, having the most tremendous experience as children and youth, were all graduated from Harbor High School, called and asked us to move, where they're now rooted in Texas. And the number of tremendous experiences we have of our families unparalleled in many ways with friendship, church, teachers, parents, and good people in the Tawny, in Tawny Town, Springdale community investing in their lives and ours. Their adult, uh, they, uh, they're, they're now adults, but they're now anchored and rooted in Texas, and we have grandchildren, and they simply have decided they, they want us to be back down there, it's good to be wanted. There have been many good things. I have seen this commission and the city work towards with diligence and vision to make Tawny Town the best community without a doubt to live in all of northwest Arkansas. It has been a great blessing to work with the likes of each of you on this commission as members, as members in our city council, mayor, city staff. A great leap forward has been in our planning department, where both Mark and Brad have combined to really make a tremendous help with stellar knowledge, excellence, and great leadership. Future is very bright for Tawny Town, and although we must adapt to the change as well, perhaps modify our decisions from time to time to promote the best interest, our vision to make Tawny Town the best community will be dependent upon many of the ideals and the vision that we have in common for our families and our community. Virtues, values, and vision of selflessness, sacrifice, giving, serving, humility, and respect for one another are the main contributors to the making of what, to make the best of communities. The fear and the reverence and the love of God and his laws are what will make and keep the person, the family, and the community, and the nation best, safe, and of the best place to live and work. I want to thank each of you for your service, you know, you commission members, and you city staff for allowing me to work and serve in this outstanding town. My goals include to continue to see through this heritage district. We have now kicked off, and it's not really materialized for everybody yet to know, but it's as an agent, as a real estate agent, to keep me involved, to bring about a very exciting vision we have. Bringing businesses and amenities where possible is a part of what my personal goals will be for this community. I'll be up here on a regular basis for years to come on these long-term projects, as I've been ongoing goals. My last time of service will be either May or June, or whenever you replace my seat, June's possibility. Uh, you will be seeing my new capacity in a real estate agent, bringing new developments and business. So I heartily express my gratitude to each of you, looking forward to help envision of what can be for Tawny Town's best blessings, and all the best to each one of you in what I heartily believe is the best place to live in America. And never take your blessings for granted, and give God thanks each day, those who have sac, for those who have sacrificed for you. Let us each, as Americans, pay it forward in sacrifice and in teaching that it is more blessed to give than receive. Sow those seeds of giving and gratitude, and watch your seeds have generational fruit. With great gratitude, I respectfully, uh, give my resignation.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Donnie, follow up. Follow up on that one.
Grant, have you ever thought about the planning commission? Uh, you know, I echo what Tom said, great community. I, I've been a part of Tawny Town since nineteen ninety, and seeing you all as citizens, uh, pro or against, good or bad, thank goodness, no fisticuffs, uh, I thought, great meeting, great seeing people in Tawny Town represent their part of Tawny Town, and, uh, proud, proud to be a part of the planning commission.
James?
I'd like to echo Donnie's sentiments, um, great turnout. Um, I love to see more people turn out at every meeting, cause that's how it, it works. If you don't make your, you know, your desires or your wishes known to us, then, you know, you really forfeit your right to complain. So thank you for showing up. Mr. and Mrs. Siemens, I will tell you that the council often reverses what the planning commission has to say, so I do hope you go forward with your appeal. Um, other than that, that's all.
Josh?
Couple things. Now, I usually just end with a quote, but, um, something, something like this, when it comes before me, I express the way I feel, that is the way I feel. If I had, I'm, I'm one of those guys, if I feel that way, flip a quarter, heads tells kind of deal. I honestly think if, and I was thinking about this up here, if I flipped a quarter on this deal, it would have landed on its side, because I am one hundred thousand percent pro-property rights. And honestly, if I got told I couldn't do something with my land, I'd probably do it anyway and then face repercussions, cause that's the way I am. I am one hundred thousand percent pro the people, and I don't, I don't know how you ignore when they all show up like this. Like James said, that people say we don't have a voice, maybe in bigger government, you don't. Uh, for me in particular, it does, it does matter. Um, secondly, Tom.
Don't start crying on me now.
Damn it. Jeez. He, he, I will say, this commission is going to lose, this commission in this town is gonna lose an ally for certain with you gone. Um, but there's been like, maybe one or two times we have not voted the exact same way. And, and the way we vote, we genuinely do have the best interest of Tawny Town. You do, every vote you do. And not saying that these other members, when, when they resign, then I'll say something about them. But, uh, it's, uh, I, I knew, I knew it was coming, I didn't know it was tonight or when, but, uh, the town should actually be sad that this guy's leaving. If, if you're pro, if you're for little government, small government, or no government, you're gonna miss this guy, cause that's, that's exactly what this guy stands for. He doesn't stand for big government, he doesn't stand for meddling in people's business, whi, which is odd that we're up here, which is probably why we are up here, because generally government does get in the way. It does, and it, it seems like it gets, every time we vote, government gets in the way, which I battle in my head all the time. But, uh, I hope city council, you guys got a tall order to replace this guy. Um, now I'm gonna end with my quote. Uh, "The world is a dangerous place, not because those who do evil, but because of those who look on and do nothing." Albert Einstein.
Thanks, Josh. Tom, thanks for, uh, thanks for all you, you've done for, for the city. You've, uh, definitely put, put forth your best. Sometimes you'd get us in the ditch up here, but we would try to get you out.
That's true.
You'd get winded sometimes, um, distracted and off in a, in a, in a gutter, but, uh, we do appreciate all that you've done. Uh, you will be missed, tough shoes to fill. Um, and with that being said, huh, yeah, Candy, Candy started out, didn't you, Candy?
I did, I did.
James wanted to make sure.
I don't want to say anymore. I will cry.
James wanted to make sure you got your, your speaking done. Okay. So with that being said, I'm gonna, uh, adjourn the meeting and ask all those in favor, say aye.
All right.